Cool. Okay, thank you, everybody. Welcome to our planning board meeting for August, or for August, for October the 3rd. We did have three items on the agenda. We now only have the one, which is 68 Park Street. And we have, we have some people in attendance, some residents of the area concerning this, this one. And we also have, I believe, Cody Clinton's here from the province, and I believe a couple others are online. So there'll be opportunities for, for people to ask questions as, as they see need. Just before we do start and call the meeting to order, so I just want to explain that because it's in my ward, that, you know, my job here is to facilitate this meeting, and I reserve the right to share my opinions come when it goes to council. So just wanted to clarify that, that my main job here tonight is to chair this meeting and not to be included in the, any of the conversation. So moving forward, I'll call the meeting to order. Declarations of conflict of interest.
That's the only one we have?
Yes, exactly. And did we give you lunch? Just wanted, just teased. Anyway, okay, thank you very much for that. Approval of the agenda?
Chair, mine.
Oh, yes. Yes, so, and when you go to speak, we ask that you please use the microphone and shut it off as soon as you're done, so that other people can get on. Okay, thank you very much. So approval of the agenda. I'll need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Chris Fournier, seconded by Counselor McCabe. All those in favor? Thank you. That's everyone. Adoption of the minutes. I'll need a mover and a seconder. Oh, you have a question. I did not see Bob Kenny.
Yeah, I just noticed in the minutes, at the last, on the last meeting, I asked a question about the swimming pools and fences under old business. And there's, there's no reference to it. Should it be?
What did you bring it up under? Was it under old business?
I think it was under old business.
Under old business. I'll tell you what, how about bringing the question up again?
Sure.
When we go, we approve the minutes first.
Okay.
And then we'll make sure it gets on the minutes for the next time. How's that?
Okay.
Good. Thank you very much. So we do need a mover and a seconder for the minutes for the adoption. Moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Paul Conley. All those in favor? Would be everybody. Thank you very much. So conversation with the minutes. I see, Bob Kenny, you just want to bring that question up one more time, please?
Yeah, I asked the question about what's taking place with it in terms of the bylaw. Is anything happening?
Did you want to answer that, Alex?
So in regard to the, you know, the bylaw stands, that the current bylaw stands, and so everybody that is non-conforming needs to come into conformance with the current bylaw, the way that it was written initially, that we're just, we're just adhering to the bylaw, the way that it's been in the past.
Okay. And is there a penalty if they don't?
People will, you know, we did receive some, you know, during that public consultation, we received some input from a number of people. We've had some back and forth with some people in regard to, you know, some misunderstanding in regard to the height of the pool. But anybody who is not in conformance, and, you know, maybe you could speak to me offline as to, if you're aware of a property, that we'll follow it, follow it up and pursue it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. That's, answer your question?
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Conley?
I think, I think the, the question really was, there were at that public meeting a number of people that were complaining about folks that weren't conforming. And I think the question at the last meeting was, could we get an update as to, are there people out actually? I guess it's probably too late to start checking on, on properties because pools are pretty much finished for the season. But I think it was more a question of, you know, enforcement. Are there people monitoring the properties that aren't conforming?
Mr. Chair, I wouldn't say we're actively monitoring, but we are aware of some that were not in conformance. And to your point, this is likely the most ideal time of the year to make people aware of the, that for next year, or for, if, you know, the season may be over for some people. But, but again, that it doesn't hurt to get that message out, that, that, you know, people must comply with the bylaw as it's written. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alex. Good, Mr. Conley? Good. Okay, thank you. So outside of that, we'll move right into reports. And for those folks that are, that are here this evening and online, just a quick breakdown of our committee. So I have, I'm the chair, and we have two counselors, Counselor McCabe and Counselor Yankoff, and we have six resident members that, that were appointed to this board. That's it on it. So tonight's meeting will be about, about looking at staff's recommendation and whether or not planning board considers moving it forward to council, along with the explanation from, from the province, and, and of course, comments from the residents as well. So moving ahead, so it's 6A, 68 Park Street, PID number 365593. And Laurel, you got the floor. Thank you very much. You're up, Laurel.
Okay. This application's for a major variance to allow a temporary use at 68 Park Street, located on the corner of Park Street and Riverside Drive. The property in question is zone comprehensive development area. The request is to allow modular housing, two modular housing complexes, each containing 25 units, to remain on the property for a period of one year. The modular housing complexes are being placed to provide temporary secure housing for homeless individuals that are currently living in encampments throughout the city. And the application is being made under section 3.91F of the zoning and development bylaw, which allows a variance for temporary use or structure in a manner otherwise prohibited by this bylaw for a period no longer than one year. So the overall property, it's 6.3 acres. Here's a, this is the overall property. The proposed modular complexes are intended to be located on the north portion of the property in the paved parking area. There are currently two one-story garage maintenance buildings on the property that are scheduled to be demolished. They're about here. And the site also contains the, the current COVID testing clinic. So except for the west end of Park Street, which is an older established residential neighborhood, this area of the city tends to be industrial in nature and contains uses such as a school board, government garage, parking lots, government offices, buildings, Irving Oil tanks, and Charlottetown sewage treatment plant along Riverside Drive. And north of the site, there's also the Charlottetown Driving Park. Park Street is unique in that one half of the street is split with residential uses, and the other half is more industrial and commercial in nature. And I'll just pop back to, so you can look at the zoning map. So you can kind of see, this part of Park Street is more industrial and commercial, under the CDA zone, and then further west, it is residential. So the division of uses on the street, it's separated with a tree buffer, and PEI Housing Corporation is proposing that the modular units be placed on the site at the end of October. Water and source services will have to be provided to the site. Once servicing is complete, it is protected that the housing complexes would be operational in November. And the purpose of locating them there is to provide warm shelter for people during the winter months. PEI Housing Corporation has indicated that the emergency shelter facility will provide the following. It will be operated by the Department of Social Housing Development and Housing, PEI Housing Corporation. The complex will include two facilities. Each facility has 25 beds. Accommodations include shared living space, sleeping space, communal washroom, shower, and laundry facilities. Hours of operation will be 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM, seven days per week. Support staff and security will be on site during operational hours. Perimeter fencing will be placed for security and privacy. Modular units are designed for extreme temperatures and will provide safe and warm accommodations during the winter months. So with the growing cost of affordable housing, there's been a sharp increase in homelessness within the city. And it's been difficult for many vulnerable individuals to access safe, affordable housing. Some stats on housing and PEIers follows. PEI government's monthly inflation index shows an 8.3% inflation rate on PEI in August of 2022, which is the highest year-over-year increase compared to all other Canadian provinces. I RAC recently set a maximum allowable rent increase effective January 1st, 2023, to 10.8% for rental units heated with furnace oil. According to the PEI Real Estate Association, the MLS House Price Index, HPI composite, single-family, single-family benchmark price was 372,700 in August of 2022, advancing 17% compared to August of 2021. CMHC vacancy rate for the primary rental market on PEI in the fourth quarter of October 2021 was 1.8%. So there's many policies within the official plan that supports a provision of safe housing for vulnerable populations, and I included them in the report, if you had a chance to look at them. And under the bylaw, we did send notification to the public. On September 13th, notice was sent to 12 property owners located within 100 meters of the property, advising them of the request for the one-year temporary use. And we did receive one letter. And the, the letter was received from a business, a local business, and they outlined some concerns in their letter, and that letter was also attached to your package. So the official plan recognizes the needs for various forms of housing, including the need for accessible safe housing for the homeless population. This area of the city, it wasn't zoned to accommodate permanent housing. Typically, long-term housing would not be located in an industrial area. However, these types of modular dwellings would typically be used in work camps in industrial or commercial areas. You might be familiar with them. They generally use these out west, in places like Fort McMurray. It's recognized that the subject property, it's located on the periphery of a low-density residential neighborhood, so there has to be measures put in place to mitigate any kind of concerns from the neighborhood. And there's very few sites like this in the city that could accommodate this type of modular housing. The area is close to various amenities, such as other shelters, transition facilities, and medical services. It's within safe walking distance to these services. The site has accommodated other temporary uses, such as the COVID testing facility during the pandemic. And this proposed location, it can be operationalized very quickly to meet the immediate needs of a vulnerable population. Because the use is temp, is temporary, it will allow the city and the province an opportunity to review the appropriateness of this location, or to secure another location over the one-year time period. So staff are prepared to support the application for a one year, for a one-year period, subject to the operational specifications submitted by PEI Housing Corporation in their application submission. And those, those operational specifications were what I read a little earlier to you, that was included in the application. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. And as you said, Mr. Chair, we also have PEI from, or representatives from PEI Housing and some residents that would also like to speak.
Thank you very much, Laurel, for your report. What I will do, I guess, probably is, if there is any questions here at the present time, okay, and then we could also ask folks to come in, and we can ask more questions at that time. So we'll start. Mr. Conley, I believe you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I was just wondering about the code that indicates landscaping. What, what's being proposed there to kind of not camouflage, but provide a little bit of?
Buffer.
Well, they are proposing a fence. I don't know if any landscaping was included, per se. They have shown some green spaces, but it is a parking area, so the area is fully paved. So I, I'm doubtful that they would remove that paving and put in green area for a one-year use. If it were a more long-term use, I could see them maybe looking at that. But that may be a question you might want to pose to PEI Housing Corp.
The site plan seemed to indicate that there were three green, the code says it's future landscaping.
Yeah, it does say that, so I, I'm a little unclear on that myself. I would probably ask PEI Housing Corporation about that, but I would assume the fact that it has to be operational by October, or by November, I can't imagine that they would remove parking space, or asphalt at this point in time. You wouldn't even get grass growth this time of year.
Okay, thank you very much for your question, Paul. Any other questions at this time? Counselor Yankoff?
Thank you, and thanks, Laurel, for your report. I'm just curious, we're talking about a temporary one-year. I may, and maybe this is a question for PEI Housing. What happens after a year? Homelessness doesn't go away? So I'm just wondering, is?
So the way this would work, they've applied for a variance for one year, and the bylaw would allow them up to one year. If they wanted to apply again, they could come in. It would be up to the board and council to determine if they were okay with approving it again. I believe they can only go to two years maximum, if, if the board were to re-approve for another year. And if it were a more long-term solution, under the CDA zone, they would have to go through public meetings, and, and it would have to go back through planning board and council, and they would have to enter into a comprehensive development plan. I think at this point in time, they're just trying to secure housing for the winter, and then they'll even have to determine if it's the most appropriate place to locate this form of housing, long-term.
Thank you very much for your question, and thanks for the answer. That's great. Counselor McCabe?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Laurel, for your report. I guess I'm needing clarification before I even try to wrap my head around everything. We're talking housing, but when I read the hours of operation, it reminds me more like it's a shelter. So is it a shelter or is it housing? Will there be different people, similar to what would happen at Bedford McDonald, where they come and line up and, and get a room for the night? Or is this their house, and they're only allowed in their house from 8:00 to 8:00?
Well, it's both. It's a shelter, it's, it's housing, but it's not, I mean, from what I understand, and this should be put to PEI Housing Corporation, I don't believe people are assigned to a room so that it's theirs every night. I believe it's based on the need, the current need in the, the community, and who is in need of housing, and the availability of what they have in the shelter.
Can I just follow up to that? So when I read about Halifax, because Halifax offered a similar model, and basically, right now, they're full. So I, you know, it sounds to me like in Halifax, it's more of a housing complex where people apply, and there's criteria, and they're selected based on that. And it's probably is a question for PEI Housing, obviously. So maybe I'll hold off and ask the rest of my questions at that point. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Bob Kenny?
Thank you, Chair. Laurel, just out of curiosity, the access to this site for the people who will be using it at night will be down Park Street, right?
I believe you could actually, yeah, I would assume you could come off Park Street or Riverside Drive. There's a current, I believe, current access right about here, and there is access into the area from Park Street as well. I'm not entirely sure if, if there is a lot of concern from the neighborhood, if maybe they will block off the access from Park Street or not. But, but yeah, those are some of the things that we do need to, to determine. But definitely access off of Riverside Drive, I would assume.
Thank you.
If I may, I don't think there's any access off Riverside Drive. There might be for, there might be for?
Yeah, I think there is.
Because it's so, like, transportation should look at this then, because there's, you're getting pretty close to the intersection, right?
Yeah, not vehicular access. I'm talking about pedestrian.
Just pedestrian. Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would make sense, perhaps, yeah.
I don't think the clientele have automobiles, and I'm not saying that to smug, but...
No, but there's food trucks, blah, blah, whatever's going to be used to feed, feed them, right? I mean, there's going to have to be access given. But I would assume Park Street would have to be the location for that.
For the, yeah, for vehicular, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Good question there, Bob. Thank you. Any other questions at this time from the board? If not, maybe we'll ask Mr. Clinton if he'd like to come in and say a few words? Good afternoon, gentlemen. How are we? Mr. Doyle?
How are you?
Mr. Clinton, good, good to see you. So I guess, there are questions, I guess, and, or unless you want to do a little introductory, what the real thoughts of the province is on it, and then we can go into questions, I guess.
I can just, a little bit of clarity.
Yeah.
I was listening to the questions out there. So this is a temporary emergency overnight shelter. It's, it's not, it is not proposed to be the similar project that's in Halifax. It will be, it'll be a temporary emergency overnight shelter that operates from 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM. And there is, there will not be any access off Riverside Drive. That's a, a safety concern to the clients that will be occupying these spaces. So our, our plan is to use Park Street as the, as the entrance and exit for the facility.
Okay, good. Thank you very much for clearing that.
Pedestrian access, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I think one question there, I guess, you probably heard, was, Mr. Conley asked about a buffer, or like, what's the plan separating from the parking lot, because there'd be cars parking there due to the track and the civic center?
So it will be fenced all the way across. So we're, we're planning to put fence all the way across. So we're planning to put fence all the way across the whole facility. It will have privacy slats, so you won't necessarily be able to see through it directly. Yeah, so that's basically, with regards to landscaping as well, like, there is some potential for future landscaping. I know we've visited many facilities across Atlanta, Canada that offer these type of services to clients and potentially a community garden was discussed as well, something above, above the ground essentially.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Anything else? I'll open up the floor to any members that have questions. Anybody? No? Yes, Counselor Yankoff.
Thank you. I'm just curious, not really a planning question, but I think a question that we're, a lot of us are hearing, and that would be, are people going to have to walk there in the cold and line up like you do at Bedford McDonald? Or is there a way that they can book in for a week at a time or a day at a time? Could you just talk to me about how that, that process would work?
Yeah, for sure. So the process is exactly the same as it will be, or it currently is for the Bedford McDonald House and Deacon House, the current shelters that we currently have in play. So everything will be booked, or potentially booked through the shelter support line. So individuals will call and book their, book their units at that time. It will be an overnight shelter though, so they will be asked to leave and then rebook in the morning, typical with the same procedures and processes that we have for our existing shelters.
Good. Thank you. Good question, yeah. Anybody else?
I'd ask one follow-up question.
Oh, sure, sorry.
There was, there was some rumblings, and, you know, a lie to me is a lie to you, but there was some talk of trying to integrate the services that they're closer in proximity. And there was some talk that perhaps the planning, they were looking at maybe the outreach center being in that, in that same area. Is that something that's being considered or is that a down-the-road project or?
Yeah, so it's not part of this, this application or part of this plan, but the conversation is ongoing about the community outreach center and the potential to relocate. And as of right now, there's been no decision made in that regard. But we're kind of still in the process of reviewing that and evaluating the, evaluating that. You know, there's always the potential to relocate.
Counselor McCabe.
And I guess I'm just trying to be prepared with my questions too when you're trying to make your best effort. So this is a shelter for both men and women, I assume?
Correct.
It will be. So there will be criteria around safety plans and stuff in place. You're not just going to bunk people wherever there'll be proper processes and stuff followed. Because a lot of what I'm seeing too, and I've had this concern, is, you know, with our vulnerable population, and it's great to see that we're hoping to plug into programming and continue to support them the best way we can. But we want to make sure that as a city, once we put the housing in our city, that we're collaboratively working with province to ensure that we can ensure the safety for the vulnerable people as well as for the residents of the city of Charlestown. And what I mean by that is, I know we're strapped sometimes with our own resources and stuff and how it'd be great to know what the plan is to be collaborative in that so that we're ensuring everybody's well-being as we continue to try to work with everybody, so.
Yes, for sure. I mean, the safety, a safety plan and an operational plan are critical factors in this project. We're, we've had conversations with the chief of police about potential, or partnering on an operational plan and making sure that all the potential risks that could come are mitigated or potentially mitigated through proper planning. So we've, we have hired a very well-respected and well, I guess, a good person in this, in this type of facility as a site manager. So he will be on board. He's already on board, kind of in the planning phases of developing the operational plan and the safety plan. So that's well noted, absolutely. But that is kind of, through our consultations with the police and the chief of police, we're hoping to develop a very strong operational plan that will mitigate as many possible risks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else, guys, clear for now? Okay, I guess at this point, we'll probably have some of the residents, I think they might have a few things that want to say, I guess. I guess Laurel, if you wanted to ask each one to come in and they can... And they could probably, I, we could probably make accommodations for you up here, guys. Yeah, you guys can come up here and sit, sit up here in the corner if you want, so you can, you can actually hear the questions and face the music as they say. You're quiet, Cody.
There's a couple chairs up here.
Yeah, there's one there. Actually, this is the best seat in the house right here, though.
Do you want me to dust it off?
I'm like to... You gotta get right smart enough to have that seat. Oh, sorry. Hello, everyone. How are we? So in my introduction of what the planning board consists of, I did in haste forget to mention that our CIO is here, Donna Waddell. She comes to all the planning meetings, so I just wanted to make sure people were clear on that and the resident members and councils. So each of you, if you don't mind stepping up to the mic, you're free to make comments. You have five minutes to kind of give a little blurb on your questions and thoughts and we'll try and get answers for you here. And if we can't, we'll try and get staff to get back to you with, with the answers, working with the province here. So just, you just say what your, what street you live on. You don't have to say the number or anything, but just your name and where you live.
Hi, I'm Lori Chauverie and I'm a resident of Beach Street. And Beach Street was, it was shown on there, but we weren't considered as part of the community that should have had some of the outreach maybe. We're just as close as the residents that are on Park Street, so I find that a little disconcerting, I guess, that we've been ignored in this. We first heard of it at the Monday council meeting a couple of weeks ago, I guess. And then it was a week and a half later, our counselor, Mr. McLeod, did come around and talk to us. But in the meantime, everything just grows in our heads. The fact that it is an eight-to-eight shelter, we're concerned what happens after eight in the morning. Are people working together? And no, like personally, I don't want this to be not in my backyard. I don't want it in my backyard. And if any of you want it in your backyard, you're welcome to have it in your backyard. But there needs to be a focus on what is going to make the residents safe and secure and happy, as well as us recognizing that we can't have people freezing to death at night. We need to be confident that when we leave our houses in the morning for work, that our houses are safe and secure. And the fact that we've been told to come to this meeting at 4:30 on a workday afternoon, the mayor's not here, notices weren't given out to our community, makes me feel like we're not considered as important. And that's not a very nice feeling when we have this coming into our neighborhood. Sorry. I need, I need to have faith, I guess, in my city. And I know I've heard from counselors, the mayor, other people I've reached, that this is provincial grounds and this is a provincial initiative and that the outreach center is a provincial initiative. And we see what kind of a mess that is and was at the beginning anyway. Maybe it's getting better. I don't know that. But I hope some lessons have been learned that you're just not putting it from there to us and we're being ignored. You have to take care of your residents, all residents, not just the homeless residents.
Thank you very much, Lori. Did you want to, yeah, I think it works, yeah.
Sure, I can, I can comment on a few of those items. Hopefully provide a little bit of relief, I guess, or context. So as I mentioned, it is, it is an overnight shelter. In the morning at 8:00 a.m., we're working on a plan to kind of develop a good process to mitigate any risks on the migration path of the individuals that are using the facility. Transportation has been talked about as a potential source to potentially take these people to where they're going. Maybe it's a community outreach center or in another area in the downtown. So that's, that's kind of what the plan would be after 8:00 a.m. There will be security on-site during the operational hours. It will be, it will have a security camera system on the exterior of the property as well. So that'll be the part of the, the safety and security plan that we work with the chief police on. Yeah, so I think, I mean, those are kind of my comments, I guess, to respond to, to that.
It's the, it's the operational hours that, the non-operational hours that concern us. I'm not concerned at eight o'clock at night when everybody's looking for a bed. I'm concerned at eight o'clock in the morning when they're hanging around our yards, which because of where we are, my yards against Joe Gis Park, I have encampments behind, directly onto my yard. And I have their needles and their bottles and their sleeping bags and their stuff on my fence. So, and I know there's all different levels of people who need these services, but it's what's happening at eight in the morning that I'm most concerned about.
So you're working on a security plan moving forward, like, you know, and I guess the question is, with the, with the demographic graphics of where it is located, my first thought, if I was saying one of them would be, I'd be going to the food bank up on, say, Belmont Street. So what type of security are we going to have as people move out of the community during the mornings? What, I think that's probably the gist of the question is just exactly what...
Yeah, so I mean, one of our mitigation techniques would be to potentially provide transportation out of that area for people that wanted it. So people that need access to the supports that they typically would receive throughout the day, you know, the support services throughout the day. So if they're going to the community outreach center or going to the food bank or somewhere else, you know, the Peers Alliance, those types of community partners that we have that provide critical support to these individuals, our thought is to potentially, you know, utilize transportation to get them out of the, that area. So that would be one, one component. The other big thing is, and we really are working or planning to work closely with the chief of police office to develop a strong plan to my, to deal with the migration path of these individuals because not all of them may accept transportation, those types of things. So it's all kind of part of our operational plan that's currently being developed.
Good, thank you very much. Yeah, so it's encouraging to hear that that's being considered for sure. Any other comments, questions? Counselor McCabe.
And I know I love to hear the collaboration piece, but I guess I just want to keep it realistic that we know our resources are strapped already. So it's great if we're going to collaborate, but ensuring that whether it's extra resources coming in from the province, whatever it is, we're going to have to make sure if we're going to collaborate and expect more pressure on our resources within the city who are already at a maximum level of trying to maintain an ever-growing city, that how can we work collaboratively between the province and the city to ensure that residents are safe and things are going as planned?
Thank you very much. Anybody else on the stage?
My name's Randy. I'm a Beach Street resident and a frustrated one that we haven't been considered at all with this. And my main thing is, okay, if we're going to, with our tax-paying dollars, give them these accommodations, which I guess technically they do have the right to get it and they should receive it. But if they're going to get these accommodations out of our dollar, do they not have to prove that they're going on a daily basis, getting the help that they need? Okay, great, give them the help as part of the program. But if they don't get the help, are they still allowed to stay there? You know, you can say you're going to do this and all this, but what if they don't go and get that help through the day and they're still wanting to go attend that place for the night? You know, that's one question. And like, I don't know, like it's, I've had my car broken in three times. A while ago, I had a bike stolen in my backyard. And if it wasn't for us going to find it ourselves, we wouldn't even found it at all. We did, went around looking ourselves and got it and we found out who they were. But, you know, I had to, I work at nights. My wife had to just change the lock because one time her car was broken into. There was a house key in there and it's gone too. So I had to do things like that too. And like I say, my wife's very insecure with all this, you know. I, and I don't mean to be ignorant saying, but who in here would love this in their backyard? Nobody. But what are we going to do? But like, just a quick solution. Okay, you guys say a year, okay? And I'm just, I'm poisoned with politics sometimes, but okay, and a year later, okay, we'll bump it another year. Okay, you guys say only two years that's going to happen? Is that correct? Guaranteed only two years?
Well, I guess what will happen after that, Randy, is if it goes, they have to ask for a second year. And then after that, if it was to continue, it has to go through a full-blown public meeting process and CDA plan, which is a comprehensive development. They have to lay out everything to a T on paper, there's a look at design. Everything would have to be revisited right from scratch again. So there, I, from what I'm gathering, this is a short-term solution to a, to a problem. But down the road, there is a bigger, there is a bigger plan.
The system has detected that a few lines are still connected to the conference and will attempt to disconnect them. If you wish to remain in the conference, please press star one.
Like, there's going to be a lot of extra costs to this, you know what I mean? Besides giving them an accommodation, you know, there's got to be a septic, you know, everything. And furthermore, who says at the grand, anybody did any soil tests, is even safe enough for them to live there? It's bad enough I'm not far away from, but who says it's even safe for them to live there? And all of a sudden they get all these issues? Who's going to cover that? Oh, I'm sick because I live in this bad soil or whatever. I know there's asphalt over, yes, but is that a foolish question?
No, no, definitely not. I asked it myself. Do you want to answer them?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Clinton.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try and answer the ones that I remember. And if I missed anything, feel free to. So, I mean, you're probably, like Laurel had some images there on the TV of the units themselves, right? They, there are an old oil and gas mining camp.
Can I just interrupt a sec? I've seen those before and I've known people who lived in them at West. They're not too good a shape. Who's going to be doing the maintenance to get them up to stuff for them?
We are. They're going to be owned, owned by us, Housing Corp.
Open budget? That's going to last forever? At two years, sorry?
Oh, is it good now? Okay, sorry. So, yeah, we have our own, like, we own and operate our own units through the PEI Housing Corporation. So we have maintenance staff or we'll use outside contractors to maintain the units, right? But it is, it's meant to be a short-term solution, right? It is a modular solution, right? These camps are picked up and moved to different locations for like oil and gas and mining applications, right? So they're not, we're not disturbing the soil on the site where they're on blocks, right? They're lifted up. The blocks are just set on the asphalt. Like, there will be services attached to these, like water and sewer, right? But they're going to be above ground, right? And then they'll be boxed in and insulated as appropriate so that they can, they can provide those. And then they're heated with propane, so there'll be a propane tank located at the back to provide heat to the units, right? So it is, it is modular. It gives us the opportunity then to move them to another location in the future. But this is very much meant to be like an overnight application, right? We're getting people out of the cold. They're not sleeping in a tent in the park or on the Confederation Trail or wherever it is that they are. We're trying to give them kind of someplace, someplace that they can go overnight. You had, I just wanted to talk about your services question. Is that okay?
Well, go ahead.
Yeah, so we are going to have, like, we are going to have case management. We are going to have links to services, right? They are going to be working with the individuals to look at participating in programs. Some of them may already be participating in programs. Could be, Jason mentioned Peers Alliance. It could be Canadian Mental Health. It could be the Salvation Army. It could be some of those. But connecting folks to services is, is going to be something that we actively pursue on the site. It's not, it's not a requirement. They don't, they don't necessarily have to. It is going to be, we're going to look at people's safety and things like that. And if people, if people cannot be there and, and be safe, then we're going to have to look at alternative solutions for those individuals. But safety is our priority, not just for the individuals, the residents, but also for staff and also for the surrounding neighborhood as well. Like, we've, we've... Like, we've taken some lessons learned from other, from other, like, shelters that we operate or partner with, and we're trying to implement those to the best of our ability to learn from those things and provide like a safe environment for these individuals and for residents and staff.
Now, I might be correct, but wasn't there a program at West who did the same as what they're doing here now? Didn't it take them 11, 12 years to perfect this? Do you know, is that?
I don't.
Lie to me, lie to you kind of thing?
Yeah, certainly.
Is there anybody you can get from there to say, well, you know, here's what to do, let's get rid of the BS and get right to the point? And sorry, my further thing is, I would like to ask, if they're not getting the rehabilitation and doing what they need to do to help themselves out of their own problem, are they going to keep being given these accommodations every night and after night after night and not attending and trying to rehabilitate themselves?
I guess, I guess to respond, like, these are individuals with very complex needs and...
I've had complex needs myself.
Sure.
And I've rehabilitated myself.
Sure. But these, I guess what we're trying to accomplish is provide a shelter unit for people that have these complex needs and these challenges that are currently living on the streets in the cold, and this is, this is the, this is the concept that was brought up that could provide very quick sheltering accommodations to these individuals in order for them to have a spot to stay during the winter months when it's very cold. So, I understand your frustration and concern.
Yeah, I understand the answer's not politically correct, too, either, so. I'm sorry, I'm just very frustrated, and I don't mean being ignorant towards you in any way or form.
No, I'm all right with it.
But that just sounds like another politically corrected answer.
Okay.
Anyway, I'll back away, I'm just sorry.
No, yeah, go ahead.
Hi, Cheryl from Beach Street. And speaking of complex people, I have a complex child at home. She was going to school today, got off the school bus, and she got hit by a car. So, now she has disabilities. She is going to be home all day by herself. So, who's going to look after her if there's some people in the backyard when she's nervous or scared? I'm a single mom, working my butt off to provide for her and her meds and everything. So, when I get a phone call saying, "Mom, I can hear somebody at my door," am I supposed to leave work? Do you think my work's going to let me keep leaving just to go home to check on my child? No, I'll probably be fired. So, then where am I going to end up? I live right at the parking lot. I've already dealt with people in Kansas, behind my house, with these people coming. And she was terrified then, what am I going to do with all these other people that are there now? How do you think I feel? Are you just going to put up a barrier for me to keep my child safe? She has drugs in her, my house. What am I supposed to do, take them back and forth to work every day to make sure her drugs are safe? I'm sorry, I'm not comfortable, she's not comfortable. I'll call the city police all the time if I have to. She is my main priority. She got off the school bus. She was an active hockey player, soccer player, great little kid with sports, climbing trees. Now she can't even get out of bed half the time because she couldn't take a seizure. What am I supposed to do? She has complex needs, too. Sorry.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your comments, and they're tough, I understand. I guess if I got to ask the provincial representatives, if you can really take this to heart as far as what you're hearing from, you know, it's just not about security inside the fence, it's going to be security outside the fence. I think you stated that you do, working on that, and I know I've been involved with her case a few times, and it is very frustrating, and I can understand their issues here.
So, you're ready for them to work in my yard?
You know, it's, I think you need to live a day in the lives of these folks down in Park and Beach Street to really understand the frustrations that they have. But anyway, if you want to answer that as far as, you know, what kind of reassurance can we have that these folks are going to be safe? I think that's probably the question, I guess, they're asking here today.
Absolutely, and I certainly appreciate that. I guess what I will say today is, I'll kind of reiterate what I mentioned about developing a security plan with the chief of police's office and noting that we've talked about transportation. So, transportation might be a key here to get them, get the individuals that are residing in our, in our complex, you know, down to the greater Charlottetown area where they have access to those supports that they utilize on a regular basis and potentially outside of your guys' streets that you could live on. So, I mean, I noted for sure and will continue to work with the police to develop an appropriate safety plan to make sure that we can mitigate the risks that you just identified.
Thank you very much, go ahead, Chair.
This isn't a plan, we know this is a global problem, it's not just a private problem, it's not just a PEI problem.
So, Laurie, I guess I'll try and answer that. Public Works are presently, as I made you aware, thinking about closing Park and Beach Street off. That would be the opportunity. So, I can ask the Public Works Department with their design that they put that type of scenario to it as well, that we put, you know...
By November?
Not by November. Yeah. Yeah, it's a thought, it's, yeah, it's something that the city and the province could discuss. It is, that would be on our side of the land, so we would have to discuss that with the province as far as funding and how we go about getting that done, but yes, that's a good idea.
Yeah, we need to say that all levels of our government, not just the public service, not just the province to deal with it, we all need to deal with it, we all have to take responsibility.
Yeah.
So, step up.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Can I, Laurie, maybe if it's okay, maybe after this, do you mind showing me where you mean, like, what property location you mean in terms of fencing or, and that'd be okay? Okay, thank you.
No, it's a good point, well-taken, Randy, and we'll, like you say, I think Laurie's idea of fencing that whole area off as you get to the parking lot from Beach and Park will help deter some of that, but, you know, it's a very complicated, you know, security, I think, is the main thing we have to hit home here, that just not inside, but the outside, and even all day, like, as people come and go toward this area, you know, that's, you know, it's not when they're in the, inside the facility, it's when they're outside the facility, seems to be the issue here. So, they're listening to this and hopefully that they'll add a little more comment moving to the fencing and security of the homes in the direct area.
So, like, through the day, like, after 8:00 and 9:00, if we're having issues around, is there, besides the city police, somebody, we can call and say, all right, this isn't being nothing, being done, blah, blah, blah?
I'll let Mr. Doyle answer that, but I just, he did say that there will be an onsite manager at all times, but I'll let him explain that.
Yeah, that's exactly right, we'll have an onsite manager there all day. And if there's concerns and issues that will, will need to be addressed, we would be more than happy to provide kind of phone numbers or lines that we can, that you guys can call directly to relay those issues and we'll have them addressed.
Yeah, if you, yeah, if you can get me that information when the time comes.
Sure, absolutely.
We'll make sure that all the residents get that number and names and contacts of people that we can deal with. I believe, Mr. Conley, you had a question?
I just had a question in relation to, you know, the project is being labeled a temporary use project. And I know that the purpose is to allow parties, and I'd like some clarification on who is coming together to look at the longer-term solutions to this, to this issue. I mean, the concerns that are being expressed by the residents are legitimate, they're real. And in the short term, if those issues surface, they're going to need to be addressed in a very concrete way, but in the longer term, what is the, who are the people that are coming together to, to search out a longer-term solution? This is titled a temporary use application.
Thank you very much, Paul, for your question. I guess, just a little bit of information that we know with the city is the fact that there is a mental health campus being worked on, but it doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be housed, the homeless, that's probably a question I could ask Cody, or as far as what, you know, where do these folks go after two years? Because evidently it's a serious issue and it's not going to go away in two years either, so. So, one of you two gentlemen would like to answer that one?
Yep, sure, I guess I would say that, you know, our department is, has been, you know, ongoingly looking at the issues that the homeless population are kind of going through right now, and we are actively looking at developing long, short-term, medium-term, and long-term plans to help address homelessness, not just homelessness, but all different, different areas of the housing continuum, whether it be homeless people, transitional housing, supportive housing, social housing, affordable housing, those are all items that are under our mandate. So, our department has engaged in that discussion for quite a while now, and we're working towards developing a plan. We will have a strategic plan for housing in the next six to 12 months that will be public information. We do work collaboratively with all different levels of government to try and help address these issues as well. So, I guess, you know, I could say the longer-term plan, we're certainly working on a longer-term plan within our department, and not just for the homeless population, but all points in relation to housing.
Thank you very much. I believe, Council McCabe, and then Council Yankoff, and then Bob Kenny.
Thank you again, and, you know, it is very complex because we are, we're dealing with vulnerable people, we're dealing with vulnerable people who are homeless, we're dealing with vulnerable people who have mental health and addiction issues. So, you can't really clump everybody into one category when we're trying to talk, but we do know, and I appreciate, Laurie, that we know that we have to make sure that people are warm and safe, and we also have to make sure you're warm and safe. And I just really want to go back to this partnership with the province. You know, if it's going to take a safety fence for residents to feel good and to feel, I mean, we need to be able to do that. We've invested a lot of money in these mobile units, we're going to invest in water and sewer, we're going to invest, so a fence isn't that much more when we're looking at the big picture. And then the long-term plan, thank you, Paul, for bringing that question, because homeless, this is not a new issue, this is just a really, it's kind of gotten to be a big issue in the last little while. So, you know, we have to be really thinking with forward-thinking to plan how we're going to best support and help our vulnerable population. So, hopefully, we'll be able to ensure, Laurie, that you feel safe at the end of this.
You sure can, Mr. Clinton.
Thank you. Just, and to add to Jason's point there, too, about collaboration, we certainly work with a number of NGOs that provide housing supports as well for this population and for other population groups as well. So, you know, for, you know, Canadian Mental Health, for example, just opened their building on Fitzory Street, right? So, that's going to be, you know, 28 units that's providing, you know, supportive housing for individuals with, with mental health needs. So, there is, there is work that's being done kind of across, across that spectrum, for sure, not just by government, but by, by other partners that we actively work with.
Thank you very much. I believe, Council Yankoff.
Thank you, I think these are questions directly to our provincial partners that are here today. And I think I'll just mention all five, and then either one of you could address them if you, if you could. One of them was, back to Council McCabe's point, can we confirm that it's 24-hour security onsite? The other thing, are we looking at, a lot of our homeless and displaced people are struggling, but they have animals? Is there going to be kennels on, on site so that they can, because a lot of times people can't go to the shelter because they have, they have a pet, and that's their, that's their support network. Are we going to have support for our indigenous people? Is there going to be a transit link? Is there going to be medical support onsite? And are we going to provide that housing-first principle, that people don't have to be sober in order to be safe for the evening? So, those are my, my one, two, three, four, five, six questions.
I'll try to tackle first, Cody, and then if you have anything to add, I think I wrote most of them down here. So, our security plan is still ongoing, but the idea was we would have definitely security guards on-site during the operational hours and security cameras off-site when there theoretically aren't anybody around, but we're still, we're still investigating that and still reviewing that, so there could be changes, but that was the original, original thought. Animals will be allowed at the shelter, so there, the good thing with these modular complexes is that we can have a little bit of separation, so there will be animals and pets allowed in the facility. This, this is a shelter for everybody, so indigenous population would certainly be able to obtain beds as well. I guess another thing to note is, you know, we also work very, very closely with the native council of PEI and those other indigenous groups, so we have very good relationships with them and are working towards projects with them as well. It will be a low-barrier shelter, so if you are using drugs and alcohol, you can certainly come in. Using on-site is not allowed, behavioral-based, so if you're, if you are experiencing, if you're demonstrating, you know, safety concerns, that will cause people that are working there, other clients, or anybody's safety issues, like, that will be a factor of whether or not you're going to be able to utilize the shelter. And I don't know if I caught all of them, I might have missed a few, so, if I missed anything, you could... Medical support, so we will have staff on-site that are, will provide case management support and support services that will be able to link these individuals to the appropriate service. So, if they're in need of mental health supports, these people will link these people to those supports. So, that is, that's the plan as of right now.
And then the transit link? I know you talked about transportation, but you didn't get specific, so are you assuming we're going to add a transit link, link to that area?
When I spoke about transportation, it was specifically just to, potentially a bus transport, the individuals away from the, away from the facility. I didn't get into transit, and I'm not even sure where the closest transit bus system would be, to be honest, unless, Cody, you might have a better idea, but as of right now, I'm not, I don't have it on me.
And just my two cents worth, I would, I would say that as these conversations continue with both the province, city, all levels of government, that I think we should aim towards, in the beginning, right off the bat, a 24-hour security service, instead of trying to implement that later. I think it should just be for the safety of those that are accessing services here as well as the residents, that I'm advocating hard for 24-hour service for security.
Okay, I believe just before, Council, I believe Bob Kenny had a question.
Thank you, Chair. One of the things I noticed here, there's two very distinct sides, and I guess I look at these people, the residents, who have some pretty serious concerns, and Uofls have a tough job to do, so I guess I ask the question, is there going to be open lines of communication here? And if you're talking to a security committee, is there any way that perhaps a couple of the residents can be included on that committee so they can take information back to their neighbors and answer some questions and pass questions on to Uofls as well? Is that a possibility?
Yeah, I didn't mention the security committee, so to say, so to speak, but I, that's certainly something that I would be willing to consider, for sure.
That's a good point, we'll take it, thank you. Council McCabe?
Sorry, I just really want to know and understand exactly everything as I'm, as I'm trying to be able to provide correct information for people. You talked about staff will be providing case management, the shelter's open from 8:00 to 8:00, is there, so the case managers are the... case managers are the security people that are going to provide case management? Like you're going to have security plus case managers onsite? Just I'm trying to think when you're going to link these people to services because not too many services operate from eight in the morning or eight at night till eight in the morning. So I'm just.
Yeah, so I think there's two there's two kind of groups of staff I guess. There's there's security staff, right, that will do kind of perimeter and exterior security and then there's our own staff which would be kind of current shelter staff that would work kind of actively like with the individuals to then link them into service.
During the day or overnight?
There's two different, there's two different.
Okay, but are they going to be doing that linking overnight or during the like are they going to be on staff in the day at the at the shelter when it's closed?
It may depend on what they're linking them to. I guess if they're if they're like if it's medical for whatever reason or if it's this or if it's that, if that service is available at that time. If not, it may be may be passed on to some of our daytime staff to kind of take over. It I guess it depends on specifically an individualized support system for what that individual needs.
Okay, I just know you know I work in the system a little bit too so I understand it how challenging it can be anyway. So I just want to I don't want people thinking that it's going to be this case manager they're going to link if we don't have the opportunity to actually do the linking. Like I'd rather say it's security and they're going to watch to make sure people are safe but if it's going to be part of that.
The staff that we the staff that we're we're hiring will have will have case management qualifications and will be be able to provide case management for these individuals, whether it be late in the evening, early in the morning, whatever really it takes.
And then that'll be in addition to the security people. So there'll be two staff on.
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Thank you very much. So I guess the one question I have just you know at Coliseum fade, at what point does the outreach center move down there? Is that even a realistic? I might as well get that out because there's a lot of people thinking that it is and as I hear you hear some of your comments that we're starting to put counselors there. So at what point does it all just become the outreach center?
I can't, I don't know. I don't know. I don't have an answer to that. I think that the like we said, it's a very challenging situation. There's no immediate plans to my knowledge to relocate the outreach center to that but I like I mentioned earlier, the conversation for a new location of the outreach center is is always ongoing.
And I guess if I can ask the same question again, Alex, you and the manager are planning, what's the process if if the province did decide they want to put the outreach center down there, what's the process then? Because this application is for the shelters only, is that right or?
Mr. Chair, you are correct. I mean the temporary uses for what is being proposed this evening, if they wanted to change the the conditions of that, then they would they would have to come back and qualify you know that it is changing. I mean that's the issue with these terms and conditions. I mean that it's being communicated to the to the public that it's going to be operational between eight PM and eight AM and anything that deviates from that is not a part of this approval. So they have the right to come back like anyone but but again it would trigger another process. Yep.
Thank you very much. Counselor Yanka.
I probably already know the answer to this question but when you talked about your strategic plan that you are hoping to have done in six to 12 months, right, I assume that's going to probably outline some of the questions we ask like safe injection sites, harm reduction, outreach center location and and shelters? Those would be.
Yes, so part of that would fall under our housing action plan that we'll be developing in in the next six to 12 months. Part of it is kind of a in collaboration with health as you know with regards to the safe injection site. So not necessarily part of our housing strategic plan but it will be a factor as well, yeah.
Okay, anyone else from the residents have any more to say? Good.
Can I just ask, did you answer the question like you said, if they don't get help through the day and they're not doing that, are they still going to be allowed to use these combinations?
Yes.
So it's a behavior based shelter so as long as they're as long as everything is you know looked positively with regards to a safety lens and they're able to be able to join you know the rest of the group within this facility without any safety concerns and yeah, they would be allowed in the facility.
Communication is key and part of my biggest problem is that as part of our Beach Street we've been neglected to be informed of any of this till right now. And in mind if I remember the outreach center was on Wayman Street and when it got to be a problem on Wayman Street it moved up to the old burning cloud and when that got to be a problem they did some fencing, did some things, did some whatever. But I just really have to hope that you guys are looking at all of these and you guys have paid the big bucks and you guys know like we're committed to mental health. You guys know all these risks and assessments. I just really hope you're not dumping it on our backyard because we're the least amount of trouble down there.
Thank you very much.
Can I can I make?
Yes, you may.
Can I make a statement in regard?
Yep, you go right ahead.
So there's there's definitely been some lessons learned from some of those activities and we've tried to incorporate changes and make changes to you know the best of our ability and in regards to the safety of the neighborhood and in regards to the safety of the individuals that participate. So I don't think that's going to be a different case here with this solution, that if there's things that we can do on an ongoing basis to help support the neighborhood or alleviate some of these concerns then we're definitely going to be open to that and and listening to that and working to to ensure that it's 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 safe you know from our perspective, from your perspective, from the individuals accessing the service from their perspective. So we can make changes on the go as as well.
What happens to the person who's turned away when we need? Will wander around. So those.
Yeah, likely if it's if it's behavior based you know there there could be situations where the city police is involved to remove that individual. There could be situations where we may have you know another shelter location for them to go to so we would look to relocate to that. It it would be situation dependent, I guess, yeah.
Oh, yes, I agree.
I I know that this planning board we're going to be making a decision whether or not we move this on to council this evening. I wonder if we could ask that our our partners from the province be available to council at the at the next council meeting so that the other counselors have the opportunity to ask questions as well?
I would think that'd probably be a good thing, yes, for sure. If you guys can make yourself available for second Monday.
Yeah, I think that was the plan anyway.
Yeah. Good.
Chair, Tuesday?
Oh, yes, sorry, Tuesday. Sorry because of the holiday.
Yep, no worries.
Good, thank you.
11th of August.
The 11th, yeah. Counselor McCabe.
Well, I'm going to move that we're going to send this to council to approve the temporary application and I know that we're going to have to listen to some of the concerns that have come forward and that might have to can we can we do that and put criteria in or does that have to go in before we go? Because I'm thinking the fence that they've talked about and I'm thinking some of those extras that have been brought up. It can't be something we talk about and not really act on. I think that's fair to protect our residents of Beach Street and Park Street. So if we could have some of those conditions outlined, I'd be more than comfortable to push this through for the one year temporary variance.
And I can I'll I'll second moving it on to council for council's final decision.
Okay, and do we have do we want to just go over those or the staff have that under control?
So can I can I make a can I make a request around that perhaps?
Sure.
Just that if if I know that there's individuals taking minutes at the meeting. So can we receive something from the city kind of pursuant to some of these requests? I guess and I know that there was written feedback that was provided as part of this process that that we have not received. So if there's some of that feedback that that's been there, is that going to be able to be provided to us to kind of look at and action upon?
Oh, thanks Cody. I'll ask the manager Alex to answer that. Thanks.
Mr. Chair, yes. The the way that the the recommendation is written is that they do have their proposal in there. They have a number of things that they're proposing. Fencing is a component of that. So that is the recommendation from staff at this time notwithstanding that it is going to council and council can apply any term condition they they want. There could be further clarity there. The more clear that these recommendations are, the better it is for me or the staff to implement. So in the interim, we will get the minutes from this meeting to the to the province.
Yes.
And anticipating the council meeting and you know again this is just gets it to council but in regard to the specificity of those conditions, they may agree on Monday night to to a number of them and and council can can possibly assign new ones or clarify other ones. So that opportunity still exists. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Counselor McCabe.
And just clarity and I appreciate that the application for the fence for the secure area was in place but we're talking about fencing for the residents for their protection. So some of those ideas, we might as well do this right. Let's roll this out well. Let's make sure everyone's protected and let's collaborate and and do a good thing.
Yeah, I'll agree 100%. So go ahead Alex.
So as we continue as this continues to unfold, I need to know very specifically. I mean, you know, like I don't know exactly where you know between us and the province we maybe some discussion but for a term and condition to be clear, it's got to usually have a map. That's where the fence is going to go. So it's those type of things that are much more helpful to us so that there's no ambiguity in regard to well, I thought the fence was here, I thought it was there. We just need to clarify that very right exactly.
Well, you could pretty well it's pretty simple to just to say that there's a there's a cul-de-sac at the bottom of Beach Street. So it would have to extend outside of the cul-de-sac on the province's side all the way across Park Street to where to where Park Street starts.
Right.
Yeah, because it's yeah.
I think it's going to be important for us to know the details of.
Right, right.
So we'll send.
And again, when they have the opportunity at the next council meeting, you know they can I my anticipation is is they will take this information and then they'll clarify what they were comfortable with and and maybe where they're not comfortable and then the council will ultimately decide, okay, thank you. We'll add those as additional terms conditions and but they may possibly add some additional ones. But we just need to be very clear as to what we're what the expectation is when it's implemented. Thank you.
Okay, so so for tonight's purposes, the minutes have been taken and I think best yes.
I have a second question.
You sure can.
Are you posing to put the fence in on closing off Park Street at this point in time? Like I kind of see the fence going around to our parking lot.
Exactly, yeah.
Closing off Park Street at this point.
Well, that is the goal, yes.
Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
That's it, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I just want to for.
For clarification. No, that's perfect Donna, yeah.
There's already a fence there on the back, yeah. So just want to point out, there's already a fence on here. Yeah, and like these are different locks but like this this is all mine. Like there's only one up here and this is a double sort of.
It just shows a lock.
Yeah, so we have double locks on this side. So there is a fence along here now. Yeah. And you can just.
Fence, yeah.
Because this is all parking lot.
Jason, you can see what we're saying?
Uh, yeah.
But his problem with that is right now.
Yeah. I'd have to walk.
Yeah, so right here you just go right across. Because see there's a there's an entrance way through there as well which I got to work on as well. That takes you through into Murphy's properties over there which should be enclosed all the time but for some reason it keeps getting opened so I'll be working on that. Yeah, I'll be well, I'll be asking for a much better security system than that as well.
So the existing fence is behind the residential.
Yeah, it's behind here where the.
There's a border on Joe Gibbs.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. And then we're looking to have something to enclose the residential area off completely.
And that's all city property.
Yes, it is. C A D C and and the civic center control that part.
Owned by the city.
Owned by the city, yeah. Okay, clear as mud. So if there's nothing else then we will deliberate on we do have a motion on the floor so we'll I guess we can just vote on it here now anyway. I guess we'll be done with it. Just as easy, everyone's here. So so the motion on the floor is to is to go ahead with staff's recommendation on to council with the appropriate changes which staff have recorded and which will also go to the province and in interim if there's anything else that needs to be added from what they heard tonight, they can forward that on at the night of council.
And they'll be there.
And they'll be there to answer the questions and you folks are again welcome to be at that meeting. You wouldn't be able to speak at that particular meeting but you are more than welcome to be to be part of that just to make sure things are on the on the straight is what we talked about here tonight. So the motion was moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor Yankoff. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. That's just about everybody. Okay. And those against? I see none. So that will be it for tonight's meeting unless any new business? Nothing? Okay, thank you everybody for coming. Appreciate your time and we'll be talking. Thanks guys. Appreciate it. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.